Wonderful.
Okay, I'm going to call the public hearing to order. Indicate that we are in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq. And we are all treaty people as we work towards reconciliation and or truth and reconciliation, I should say, which is coming up next week, as those know, on Tuesday, Truth and Reconciliation Day on September 30th. Also want to acknowledge the history legacies and contributions of the African Nova Scotia people who've been here for over 400 years. With that, roll call, you'll see some empty seats up here tonight. We have regrets from Councillor McGregor, who is out of town on business, and Councillor Dunn, who is under the weather, not on business, and unable to be here tonight. But to my left, I have Deputy Mayor McKinnon and Councillor Fraser, Recording Secretary Reed, CAO Weirs, to my right, and guy down there plugging in his equipment is Planning and Development Officer Sean Day. So this is a public hearing with regard to one particular matter, that being a development agreement for 2020- 2022 Union Street, 2022. That didn't sound right.
Yeah.
How about 2200?
Twenty-two hundred.
How about 2200?
That's it.
I'll get it right in a minute. Twenty-two hundred Union Street. An application for development agreement has been dealt with or developed, and this is an opportunity for people from the public to have a voice, to have a say on to whether they're for or against, or questions concerning it. Council will then be deter- making a decision at our council meeting of next Monday, a week from- week from tonight. It'll be on the agenda for council. This is a- what will be coming up after our public hearing, just so you know, is our Committee of the Hall meeting. And our Committee of the Hall meeting, at our Committee of the Hall meeting, we don't actually conduct business. We take information and reports from groups or individuals, and we- all decisions are made at our council meeting, which is, as I said, next Monday evening. So, over to Sean on the development agreement for 2200.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention Blair Van Veld is unable to attend tonight. He's the one putting forward this application. He's in Winnipeg on business, so he asked me to pass along his regrets at not being able to be here. So, this is, I think at least, a pretty exciting development agreement. It's the first of a kind in Westville, I think, where we would see a series of townhouses built from modular units. And I think it augurs in what's going- we're going to be seeing a lot of going forward. We're going to be seeing a lot of new housing constructed in Westville. If all the various conversations that our team has been having with developers, I think that the nature of Westville is going to change substantially in a very positive way over the next few years. Oh, I should put the rest- ignore the misspelling of the word "hearing." So, we already know that it's at 2200 Union Street. That will probably change. I think we'll end up with a private lane name. I don't know what the name is, and then the units would be numbered off that rather than 2200. I'll move off that screen quickly.
I got it.
I've got it right here. So, 16 townhouse units is the number that we're looking at having put up. They would be in four buildings. Each building would have four. In the planning process, and I've gone through this before, and some of you may have been here for it, so I'm not going to belabor it, but we have a submission that will come in. We have discussion that is aired through the PAC, and which is on video for everyone to enjoy. We have a staff report that goes to council, and we look at whether or not there may be some revisions that we want to make to the application as it comes forward. PAC then decides whether or not to move to first reading, and so we've gone through that process. And then we move on to the public hearing, which is the stage we're at this evening. It seems that second reading will be on the 29th at the full meeting of council, if council decides to go ahead with this. And with any development agreement, if council decides to approve the agreement, if there are aggrieved people, they have the ability to appeal that decision to the, what was the Utility and Review Board? Its name has changed, and I'm not sure what the new name is, but... Planning governance, again, this has been aired many times, but quickly, we operate under the Municipal Government Act, and that prescribes what a municipal council can do with respect to land use planning and most other matters as well. We also have a series of statements of provincial interest. When we're doing land use planning, these are things we have to pay attention to. They're viewed as being applicable across the province and of interest and importance to the entire body of the province. When you have planning documents, they're normally contained in a municipal planning strategy, which is meant to be the higher level objectives and goals and policies for land use planning in the community. And then, in the current instance, we also have a secondary planning strategy that is just for Westville. We're still right now within a regime where we have similar documents to other towns. Lastly, the nuts and bolts, the land use bylaw, that's where you see the provisions about side yard setbacks and those sorts of things. And in this case, it also references us to the ability to do a development agreement for a development of this kind. Planning tools going up in order in terms of difficulty, but also in terms of the kinds of applications you can receive as of right, very simple stuff. Say if you live in an R2-zoned area, someone comes and wants to do a semi-detached house, they meet all the setback requirements, the parking requirements, they get a permit. If, on the other hand, they want to do four units on that same lot, we have a provision to do site plan approval. That's something that, if agreed to, the site plan that they propose gets circulated around the immediate neighborhood for comments and concerns by the neighbors. Lastly, if they wanted to do a 20-unit apartment building in that same area, they would go through this process, a development agreement. And that's kind of the highest order of planning tool that we have available to us. So, here's the site. If I had a marker, I would show you where the trailer, the multi-meet home park is, Evans Way, top-left corner. And you can see an open field just to the left of that.
Havana's going to the...
I know, that's awesome. I didn't realize we had Havana. So, that is the site. It's all right now one contiguous parcel of land, and it's all right now zoned for a mini-home park, a land lease community. Mr. Weirs, if you could point out the intersection with Main, right down the street, there we go, and the food land, right there. It's three-quarters of a kilometer walk from the site to the food land, so about an eight-minute walk, which is a real benefit to those who want to live in a car-reduced or car-light way, or just, you know, want to move a boat on their own two feet. It's approximately 1.2 acres. We have a single access proposed for Union Street. I'm going to confirm that 1.2 acres in case I'm wrong on that. It's big enough for the proposal. That's the key. It's adjoining Evans Way, which is, as you know, a land lease community containing many And I've already mentioned this. That's the approximate boundaries of the proposed future site for this project. This is what one of the blocks of four townhouses would look like. This is a rendering showing or giving a sense of what it looks like. Each of them currently has two bedrooms, each of the units, but I've noticed that the rear bank of bedrooms is large enough that if they wanted, they could create a third bedroom by making those two smaller bedrooms. And the development agreement, as proposed, opens the door to that, so they could, if they want to change that layout, they would have that ability. So here we have the overall layout of the site. As you can see, there's a central entrance in. The buildings along the street are arranged so that they better align with the street. Initially, they were aligned with the parking lot rather than the street, and we thought that by changing this a little bit, it would reflect the public nature of the street better, but also it opens up some potential green space inside the development. You'll see the parking area has some dash lines on either end, and I may be getting ahead of myself right now, but I just want to mention this. We're trying not to turn any more of the site into asphalt than we absolutely have to. There's a whole bunch of reasons why. Asphalt, as you know, gets very warm in the summer, but it also results in more snow that needs to be cleared and stored someplace, and more hard surface that has to be managed with respect to stormwater runoff. So what we're showing is the potential of up to 32 spaces, but we're only actually initially going to be ha- I think they've got 24 spaces initially. And that's probably going to be enough. However, if it should prove that there isn't enough on the site, they have the ability to expand that by chewing into that green space in the areas shown. One, the only comment that I've heard that has come in so far about the project is the desire to see the trees along the front retained. And there was no intention ever of getting into that because there's no need to, but that's now written into the document, that that is a requirement, that unless there's a stoping site distance concern, the trees along the front, with the exception of some scrub, would be retained. And there's also requirements for trees on the sides and elsewhere on the site as part of the landscaping provisions for the development agreement.
Can I ask you to speak a little closer?
Oh, gosh, closer than this? I feel like I'm screaming now. Okay, planning considerations. We've got this set of evaluation criteria that we go through, and there- we also have to kind of cast our minds around all of the policies that apply to a project like this. One of the ones that we do is we check with our own staff to look at servicing fire and road safety. And so we've already had- sent out a document explaining the development to town staff, and they've all confirmed back that they had no particular concerns with the proposal. In terms of servicing, we have water and sewer at the site that has the capacity to service it. The drainage ditch is large enough and deep enough to manage the water that may come from the site. The fire chief had no concerns. And with respect to stopping site distance, where there's good straight sightlines on either side of the entrance, there were no concerns there either. Compatibility of surrounding areas. This is a residential area. The immediate development next to it, the mini-home park, is probably similar in terms of density. The other side of the street has larger lots and houses set well back, so generally, it's a low to medium-density neighborhood with nice landscaping around it on a fairly low-traffic road. I've already mentioned that it's a three-quarter of a kilometer walk to downtown. That's, you know, it could be closer, but that's awfully good. That puts it within a really good walking score, if anyone pays attention to that, and it means that, you know, you can get down to the library, you can get to the post office, you can do all of these sorts of things quite easily. There's no particular environmental constraints noted with this site. There- one map I found showed a small drainage stream or something on the site, but it doesn't show up now. So at some point, some fill must have gone on the site, which filled that in, and we do know that upstream, there has been some filling going in. And eventually, when you go downstream enough on Union Street, there are some areas that may be a little bit wet, but this particular site isn't. The biggest, I think, challenge for those living here would be that they'll occasionally have trains going through their backyard effectively. It's- the lines are fairly close, although it is set back well from the property line. Normally, a railway line has, I think, at least 100-foot right-of-way. Trees and buffering, we've talked about. We're going to keep as many of the trees along the front as we possibly can. There is one large willow that is a magnificent tree, I'm really hoping will stay, if possible. And I've asked in the DEA that any mature trees on the site that are healthy be tagged for retention, and that way, if we have to alter the angle of the building a little bit in order to retain some of those mature trees, we can do that. There's enough wiggle room within the agreement that that can happen. Briefly on statements of provincial interest. No impact on drinking water or flood risk. Flood risk is one of the reasons why, and it's not about this site, it's about anything downstream from this site. We try to minimize the amount of hard surface that gets developed, because the more hard surface you develop, the faster the water runs off the site. The fuller the ditches get, the more water that you end up in the lower-lying areas downstream. And increasingly, we've noticed that our storms are less frequent but more intense when they come. So you do have heavier rainfalls over short duration, and they are the most challenging for our stormwater system. This site, I don't know that agricultural land has been noted anywhere in the Westville area. We may have some Class III or Class IV soils, but no Class I or II soils. So this statement of provincial interest doesn't apply. This is a big one. We have water here, we have sewer here, we have a road here. No new infrastructure is required on the part of the town to enable this development, which is why infill sites like these, which are in the core of the community and which rely on existing infrastructure, provided it has the capacity to manage the expected loads from the development, are really what we need to strive for within the town. These are, you know, for our benefit, this is returning on our earlier investment in putting that kind of infrastructure in the ground. And the final one on housing, we're nailing that one as well, in the sense that the provincial statement of interest regarding housing has to do with providing a range and both type and affordability of housing. So this project is doing exactly that. It's providing more rental properties or housing in an area that doesn't have a lot and where there is significant demand. And by doing townhouses on a lot that isn't using a lot of space, you get the savings of not buying a huge amount of land, you get the savings of the type of construction, modular construction in this instance, which means it's built in a factory as opposed to all-stick-built on-site, less exposure to the weather, faster construction. And another benefit is that, from an operational perspective, it costs a lot less to heat and cool something like a townhouse, especially a two-story townhouse, where your heat is better shared, and you're sharing walls. So you're sharing floors, you're sharing walls, there's a lot less area to either lose heat or to gain heat, depending on the season. These units in the DEA, it requires them to have- be solar-ready, so the roof trusses will have extra structure, which means that down the road, they could install solar on the roof. And also, each of them will have a heat pump, which is, currently at least, I think, our most sustainable and affordable way of heating and cooling houses, and that's actually built into the agreement. So, the only other thing I've put in the agreement that I haven't mentioned in this is that we're not requiring them to turn the buildings so that what you see, what I showed, faces the street. The rear of the buildings is actually quite attractive, too, but we leave the option open if they want to pivot them. And if they do choose to pivot them so that that is what you see from the street, there would be a requirement that there be a walkway, so that there wouldn't be any driveways, there would still just be the one entrance, which maintains improved road and pedestrian safety. But there would be a walkway along the front to connect to that, so people could come out their front door if they were walking someplace, as opposed to trying to, I don't know, drapes across the ditch, which I don't think anyone would want to do. So that was the last thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay. All right. Now's the time, as it says in there, questions and comments. So, this is a public hearing, as I said in the beginning. Any questions that you have that can be directed to Mr. Day, or council for that matter? Now is the time. With regard, specifically with regard to this development is all we're talking about right now. This is- this is a public hearing for this specific development agreement. So if anyone is present that wishes to speak, comment, question, now is the time.
What do they think that the price of the rent is going to be for these stories? Like the ones that are being built in Westville now, ones over in DeCayde Avenue, I've checked into because of some of the seniors where I live at, they're $2,265 a month rent, plus you pay your own heat. The ones I checked on down here on Drummond Road, that there's supposed to be eight apartments in there, they're going to be $1,700 a month rent, plus you pay your own heat. Like, I don't make $2,000 a month, so I don't know what they expect the senior to live
So, unfortunately, within land use planning at least, that's not something that we can really deal with. The cost of construction right now, if you look at one of those floor tiles...
Oh, I know.
...is $250 a square foot. That's at the lower end of the cost of construction.
Yeah.
And developers aren't going to build at a loss. That wouldn't be a good business plan.
No, I was already told that by Sherry Blainhorn, because I already- I checked on hers, too, and hers are $2,400 a month, and she said that, you know, I can't help it, that's the price of the cost of building.
Hmm.
But nobody's thinking of something for seniors.
There are some projects under discussion. One of them that could be open to seniors would be the school being renovated, and...
We're waiting.
I know, I know.
It was supposed to be hands-on by COOP, and as soon as it was rezoned, COOP's still not there, still smashed windows, still the same way it was.
Mr. Weirs, do you have any comments you'd like to add to that?
No. The reality is the reality. Development of that kind of nature, and we're talking, you know, many millions of dollars, takes time. And that's just the life, that's just the reality of development.
I agree with that, but don't bullshit the people when they say that as soon as it's rezoned...
I'm going to- I'm going to ask- I'm going to ask that the questions and comments pertain to this particular public hearing development that we're dealing with at this point in time, if we can adhere to that. As I said in the beginning, this meeting is with regard to this development on Union Street solely, and I'll entertain, or council and our development officer will entertain questions around that. I can comment on that, on the question you raised later, and I will, during our Committee of the Hall meeting.
Okay.
If you want to do that. I will certainly make note of it, and I'll comment on them, but I- this is, as I said, this is a public hearing, this is not our Committee of the Hall meeting, it's not our council meeting. It's a public hearing with regard to this one particular development on Union Street. So if there's any- and just to comment very quickly on the rental thing, we obviously have no control over that. The owner, the developer, has the control of what kind of rent they charge. The town has no say in that, no control or, you know, anything to do with that. We're developed- we're involved with the approval of the development if we see fit to do so. And that's basically where it begins and ends with us. And, you know, and I will say, from a development, from the rental point of view, obviously they're looking at the market rental numbers and doing their analysis, I'm assuming. Most people that are in the business would, and it's basically those rents that you're expressing, although extremely high in my mind as well, you know, for most of us to afford, are- those are the going rates that you'll find around the county currently, unfortunately. Now, there will be, there will be, you know, some affordable housing market that are lower than the market rate, and that's what Mr. Day was talking about, which I will mention when we get to the Committee of the Hall, when I talk about the school project, because there will be a portion of those units that will be so-called, I hate the term affordable housing, by the way, because it doesn't really fit it, attainable housing is what I like to say. There will be attainable housing units involved in that project. Because a lot of times when developers are creating large developments, they're able to- if they're funding, if they're getting funding from CMHC, part of the requirement is that a percentage, 20% usually, is dedicated to, they call it affordable housing. Like I said, I don't like the term, but that's what it is, affordable housing. So, we'll talk about that later, but I'm sensing no further comments or questions. I do have one now, look. Okay. This guy knows the rules, so I'm sure it's about the particular development.
The elder states.
Firing McKinnon, 2326 Cowen Street. I had no intentions of speaking tonight, however, I think there should be some public input that is very, very positive as this goes forward to its final stage. Now, I don't live on Union Street, but I do live on Cowen Street, runs parallel to Union, and from a crow's flight, the crow would not even have to fly, it just...
Fly.
...down over the hill. When the leaves are off the tree, off the trees, we will be able to see those two-story units, and I think it's a real blessing for the town. I want to commend everyone that has been involved with this project, particularly our planner here, who has even saved the trees. And I think that's important, because there are so many lots today that are just cleared up, and developers should be concerned about things like that. And I just can't say enough positive about that. They're good-looking structures, they are going to help with the tax base of the town. It's positive from beginning to end with this, and I think it should go forward as quickly as possible, as it will next week. And I think it's wonderful for Westville. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKinnon. Yeah, I should have pointed out that, you know, if you have something positive to say at a public hearing about the proposed development, you can do that as well. It doesn't have to be- the public hearings don't always have to be someone comes because they don't like the idea, or they have some real concern about some aspect of the idea. We're quite willing and welcome positive comments as well. Correct, councillor? You know, I think we- I think I speak for the rest of council when I say that. So, yeah, I appreciate that, and, yeah, it is an exciting- it's an exciting project. It's something different in nature from the developments that we've had hitherto in this town. So it's opening up a new sort of area of housing for Westville that has not previously existed, notwithstanding the concerns that were raised previously. So, hearing no other comments, I'm going to call the...
Where was the developer?
Sorry.
She was asking the developer.
So it's being developed by Twin Rivers Park Limited? Twin Rivers Park Limited?
Oh, Twiner.
Yeah.
Good? We're good? Okay, I'm going to declare the- oh, go ahead, Gordon.
Go on down there.
Yep, yep, come on. Come on down.
Okay. Boy MacIntosh, 216 Cowen Street. They've developed- do they have any in the area already built that the first want to go look at and say, I want that in my neighborhood, or I don't want that in my neighborhood? These are the first missing areas.
This is the first. So there really isn't- the only thing that- it's a two-story, they're two-story, so the only thing that- it's not even close. I don't even want to suggest that, but we- on Dufferin.
Oh, God.
Or, sorry, sorry, on, yeah, Dufferin, yeah.
The ones on New Glasgow, by the sea, by the bridge.
Yeah, yeah. Something akin to what's in, we call it Rabbit Town in New Glasgow? Something, you know, that's probably the closest thing that I could think, by the bridge in New Glasgow, when you're going across the bridge to the west side, that area there, those townhouses that were constructed there. I'm not saying they're exactly the same, but that would be the closest sort of conceptually, I think.
They're also two-story.
They're also two-story townhouses.
That Twin Rivers did?
They didn't do them, no.
No?
Yeah, I like that. I wouldn't like to have that. Maybe they're going to say, oh, that's ugly, I don't want to.
So you could probably find elsewhere similar ones that have been developed, because that model is not, like, that's a fairly standard model for a two-story townhouse of that, you know, miniature and that size.
I'm wondering if Twin Rivers has it on their website.
I can track that down for you.
Yeah, they- as I said, those units that, you know, they weren't built in the same way, to my recollection, I don't know. I think they were site-built, probably.
They weren't modular.
They weren't modular, so there's a little bit of difference, but that whole- but the general concept would be very similar to those units that are there in New Glasgow, across the bridge on the west side, as you come off the bridge to the left.
Fairly high-end units?
They're higher-end, I would say, yes, yes, definitely. But the concept is the same, is what I'm saying. Anything else? I had the gavel just ready to tap, so you got under the wire, Mr. McIntosh. So I'm going to call the adjournment of the public hearing, and don't go anywhere, don't change the channel, because we're going to morph directly into our Committee of the Hall meeting. And the Committee of the Hall meeting, as I explained earlier, is a meeting that we have once a month to hear from delegations or groups or people that want to come before us to present ideas that the council may be considering at a later date. And so, I'm going to call this meeting to order. The roll call is exactly the same, no one has changed or left or joined us, so that's all the same. My comments on my territorial recognition remain the same with regard to Mi'kmaq and African Nova Scotia peoples, and we'll certainly have more to say about the Mi'kmaq celebrations of the Truth and Reconciliation Day coming up next week, at our council meeting next week. Does anyone have a conflict of interest on council for this meeting? Hearing none? So we have- we're pleased tonight that we have a presentation from the Pictess County tonight that we have a presentation from the Picto County Food Bank. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name, so I'm gonna get you, I'm gonna get you to immediately come forward and introduce yourself. I, 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 I realize when you walked in that there's our, there's our food bank representative, I'm guaranteed. So, you can, you can do it from there, if you don't mind, or you can come here if you wish.
Doesn't matter, someone's gonna click some slides for me, maybe?
I'm gonna click some slides, I'm hoping, I'm hoping.
Oh, sure.
You can sit up here if you wish, yeah, why don't you sit up here?
Yeah, and then you can sit. Good evening, and thank you so much for putting aside some time for us. My name is Shelley Manning, and I'm with Picto County Food Bank East. And we wanted to just basically meet with the different councils in the county, let them know what we're doing, and what our challenges are, just to share information. So, that's kind of what I'm here for.
There we go, there we go.
No, so again, no, I'll sit down. Okay. So, anyway, so we've got a little bit of a slideshow with just some basic information, and if someone would like to turn that on, that'd be great.
So, as we get the technical issues...
That's, that's great, not a problem, not a problem.
We generally go through this a little bit every meeting, but it's okay.
But I should say that on Picto County Food Bank East, we do have two food banks here in Picto County. We have Picto County Food Bank East, and we have Picto County Food Bank West. West basically covers Picto, the town of Picto, and those areas that are close to that, that area.
Right.
So, I'm on the east side, and it looks like we've got a slide there, so we'll just go right ahead then. Okay, so, I can do that, sure. I'll drive, just roll it back and forth, okay. Or just click it, no, just roll it.
Just roll it back.
I'll let you drive. He doesn't want to drive yet. Anyway, I wanted to start with just a little bit about us, about ourselves. We've been around for about 36 years, and we are, we are basically a not-for, not-for-profit agency. We have no government funding, aside from applying for grants from time to time. And as I mentioned, we are located on the east side, we're in New Glasgow on Granville Street. And we serve families throughout Picto County. So, we serve families in Westville, in New Glasgow, in Stellerton, Thorburn, all the very, very, various out, out rural areas as well. Oh, that's super, thanks. A new driver, okay. And what, you know, okay, that, this is great for the time being, it's super. And so, yeah, so we basically serve families throughout Picto County, with the exception of the town of Picto and areas that are closest there. We're managed and operated solely by volunteers. So, both our people that are there Monday to Friday are volunteers, our board are volunteer-run as well. We also have a very special group of volunteers that come in on Wednesdays and deliver on our behalf. And that's something that has been, I think it was initiated, I don't think, I know it was initiated during, during the pandemic. And it was spearheaded by Jim McKenn, which some of you may know. And he basically got different organizations to kind of rally around, trying to make sure we could continue to deliver food during the pandemic. And they've continued to do that now one day a week. And so, again, we're very, 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 very grateful for, for him and, and his group that they do that on Wednesdays. We're also very proud to be one of the first in Nova Scotia to receive the accreditation from the National, National Food Bank. And basically, it just, it just kind of shows and accredits and validates that we are following certain rules and regulations. It also gets us some access to grants and things we wouldn't have had otherwise. So, we're really pleased to be able to say we're following rules of excellence, and it's a part, we're part of a network, network across the country. And the fact that we're able to get some access to extra funding is always something that's nice as well. And that's just our, our, our website there. So, a little bit about our clients. Year-to-date, we've had about 1,300 households that we provided service to. One of the things that we're seeing, and this is not new, but every week we're seeing new households register. Last year, for instance, we had about 1,500 households that we provided service to. So, we're still only, you know, we're three-quarters of the year through, we've got 1,348. But what we're finding is every week we're having new registrants. On average, we're getting about 22 new people coming to our door, whether it's one person representing a family, or whether it's, you know, an individual or a household of four or five. And, and that's something that, of course, you know, we're all quite concerned with, in that this is the, this is our new reality, the food insecurity that exists here in, in Canada and here in Nova Scotia. Unfortunately, it's a statistic, a statistic that we're not excited about, but we're number one in Canada for food insecurity in Nova Scotia. The percentage in Canada is about 23%, we're 28.9. So, not an area we want to be number one in at all. But again, really glad that we have the food bank, wish we didn't have to have a food bank, but am pleased that we're able to provide this service to, to our, our community. So, of that 1,348 households, that represents about 3155 individuals. Of that, 32% are children, and we've got about 44% of households that are just one-person households. And then we've got about 18% of our clients are seniors. From the beginning of the year to the end of August, we provided 5,325 orders that were filled. Our clients are eligible to come once a month. We wish we could provide them with food that would last the month, but that's never been the model for the food bank. The food bank is providing food that'll help people, you know, get to the next paycheck, get to, you know, again, cover a bill you didn't expect to come in, so now you can still have, have a little bit of food, extra food on, on the, in the pantry. Our food orders include perishable products, so our clients will always be getting eggs and milk and bread and some type, type of protein, whether it's, whether it's hamburger or steak, depending on what our donors have provided to us. They'll have non-perishable, which is canned goods, pasta and sauces and cereals, juices. And then there'll be snacks for children, whether it's school snacks, granola bars, puddings, juice, juice packs. And then, depending on what we have on our shelves, we have what we call the extras. And these are things that, of course, they're not really extras if you need them, they're really important. Toilet paper, personal hygiene items, shampoo, you know, deodorant, coffee, tea, dog food, cat food. And also, of course, you know, another one is, just sit by mine there for a minute, another one, baby food, baby items and things like that. So, those are things that, you know, obviously not every household needs or wants. We hope, we're hopeful that we can provide it when people ask, we don't always have it on our shelves. We just had a really excellent drive this past weekend here at the, at the Foodland. It was put on by a group called Stuck-in-the-Mud Animal Services. And they contacted us about a month ago and asked if we'd be interested in them doing one. And they focused, focused on animal products, whether it was food and litter for, for dogs and cats, as well as baby food, so diapers and baby items. They did a wonderful job, we were so grateful. And again, we are very dependent on people that are able to do those kinds of things for us. So, that kind of segues nicely into the slide that's there. We, we very much depend on the generosity of our community, the organizations, the, you know, the, the churches, the individuals, the retail, retailers. Without them, we couldn't do the job we're doing. And we rely totally on, for food and, and funds from those organizations. We do get some funding, or not some funding, some food from Feed Nova Scotia, which is the provincial food bank association. They probably represent about 25% of our, our food, food, food requirements. So, again, that helps us kind of keeping, keeping the doors open and hopefully keeping, keeping food available to, to those in need. I mentioned volunteers earlier. We have a group of about 55 volunteers, we're pretty well all seniors, I think we've got two or three that are young, and it's like, oh, come on in, and hopefully we'll get them hooked. But they're there Monday to Friday. On Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we're open to the, to the public, to our clients, from 8:30 to 11:30. And then on Tuesday and Thursday, we have volunteers that are in there, basically filling the, filling the shelves, filling the baskets, unloading donations and things like that. Our operating costs, like all of us, are increasing. And so, whether it's food prices, gas prices, power, it just continues to rise. And so, that continues to put challenges on, on our ability to, to meet our demands. We have probably, costs about $300,000, give or take a bit, to run the food bank on an annual basis. And we have, oh, about $20,000, $25,000 annually, sorry, for food, for food purchases. And, let's see, that's probably it for that one. And then, how does it work? Really simple. It's very, very basic, there is no income, income cap. Often people think that if you have a certain level of income, oh, you can't come to the food bank. We don't care. If you need food, we will provide you with, we don't ask you how much you make. We might ask, what is your source of income? And that's something that Feed Nova Scotia wants us to ask for, the statistics, you know, where we're looking at people who are working and having difficulty, people that are, you know, on disability or whatever. But I mean, it doesn't, if you say, I don't want to tell you, that's fine. You know, we don't, I mean, I don't mean we don't care, we, obviously, we like to be able to provide Feed Nova Scotia with the data they need. But we, our objective is to make sure we provide you with what you need if you're a client of ours. So, all we're looking for is information on name, address, some kind of ID for yourself and your family members. And, and you need to do, you need to provide ID for each family member. So, it could, and we don't keep any information on files, but it could be a copy of the child's health card, that kind of thing. That's kind of, kind of it for, for kind of how to operate, or how to, how to approach us or become a client. One of the things I will mention as well, being a client doesn't mean you have to come every month, it's whenever you feel you need it. We've tried to focus on that this last little while, and just kind of getting some posts out there that talk about, you know, maybe it's a bad month, the kids are going to school, and you've got, you know, clothes to buy, and you've got school supplies to buy, and, and you're finding it difficult to make ends meet. That's fine, come on in. And, and, you know, I say we're once a month, we do try to be lenient when we can, because we know that things happen. And, you know, we, we try and make sure that we're able to provide what we can, depending on what we have on our shelves. Finally, looking at partner, partnering opportunities, you know, how can we work together with the town, with the people in the town? You know, if you're doing some kind of an event and you're thinking, well, you know, we could have a food drive with that, that would be great, we could provide you with information on, you know, what we need, or what, what particular items we're finding ourselves difficult, in difficulty keeping on our shelves. Of course, with the trades here, and that's always a wonderful, wonderful way for us to, to get a lot, a lot of, a lot of, you know, whether it's both money and, and items along the trade, trade route. Share information about our services with your constituents. If you have a Facebook page or a website, and you want to say, look, if you need food, here's the link to the food bank, or here's information on how to, how to approach us and get on, get on the, the registration list. Share our social media posts. We're trying to be better at that, we've been a little better the last year or so, being a little more proactive. So, if you see something you want to share with on your, on your own social media sites, please feel free to do so. And of course, obviously, if you have grants and you're aware that, oh, gosh, maybe that might be a food bank-eligible one, we'd be happy to hear about it. But other than that, we just wanted to kind of say hello, let you know that we're here. If you have people that you want to share this information with, please do so. I provided Scott with the, with this little, little, little presentation, you can be shared with whomever. And any questions or comments, please feel free to give me a shout, Scott has my information. But if there's any questions at this point in time, I'd be happy to, to, to try and answer them.
Thank you very much, Shelley. Yeah, if anybody has a question, comment from, from the gallery, we sort of welcome them, we'll let Shelley answer them. Any question and comments from council members that are present?
Very aware of the food bank, thank you.
I think we're, I think we're well, sorry, go ahead, yes, it didn't include you, but yes, you can.
I'm just wondering how, what are the factors that cause Nova Scotia to be at 28%? I'm sure that you're, must, you know, right off the top of your head, something that I want to steal.
Well, a lot, well, I think, well, it's, it's, it's income, it's, it's our, you know, the fact that we do have lower incomes here in Atlanta, oh, sorry, lower incomes in Atlanta, Canada, Nova Scotia. I don't have a lot of, a lot of depth of knowledge about why Nova Scotia we are that much higher than the rest of Canada. I think we just have a lot of jobs that are dependent on, on certain, like, you know, again, our industries that are more resource-based. We've seen challenges with agriculture, challenges with, with the seafood industry. Other than that, I, I really don't have a lot, again, I don't know the stats overall, whether our income, I know our income is lower than the national average, I'm not sure how much lower, but that would have an impact as well. We're seeing so much more homelessness than unhoused, which, I mean, 10 years ago, you didn't see that in, in, in Picto County, you didn't see, unless, just the big cities, right? I mean, Halifax and Sydney, but you wouldn't see it around New Glasgow and Truro and areas like that. And we're seeing, we've got a large continued increase in, in the unhoused or homeless, a large number of seniors as well, people on fixed incomes, and so, you know, that would have an impact as well. I can try and find out for you, Scott, to see if there's anything, not Scott, sorry, didn't catch your name, find out if there's something more specific I could share with you, because we do have access to Feed Nova Scotia information. They've not outlined that in what I saw, but I can certainly ask the question. It is, it is an interesting question, I wish I had an answer.
One, one question that I, quick question that I had, because you referenced the, you know, the only requirements are, you know, some sort of ID and, and address, and so the homeless, the homeless component of our community obviously don't have an address to give. So, are, are they showing up as well?
Oh, yeah, and they, they often don't have ID. And we provide, we've developed what we call kind of a box for the unhoused that, you know, doesn't have perishable items, unless they say, yes, I could use milk, yes, I could use eggs. And we do allow the unhoused to come more regularly. So, it, the box would include things that, with, you know, whether it's tuna with a, you know, a snap top, crackers and things, peanut butter for, for a source of protein, things you could have that you could eat easily without having to cook it and things like that.
We had, the reason I asked that, we had, we have a pantry downstairs, thanks to Counselor Fraser here, was, who was the initiator of, of the pantries here in Westville. And we have one downstairs in the hallway outside our library. And I happened to be there one day when a, you know, the first, one of the very few homeless people that I've recognized or identified as being homeless here in Westville. I don't know that they were from Westville, he was from Westville, but he was certainly here in Westville, and made himself known at the library as being in need, and was directed to our, to our pantry for things. And, you know, one of the things that, that we learned was that if you're homeless, you need foods that you don't need to cook or prepare, or heat up even, right?
Yes.
So, that became very obvious, and I think we, we learned a lesson, all of us, that, you know, the pantry needs to include a lot of those items as well. So, and, and thanks to the library staff, you know, they were able to go and actually get some of those items that, that, that this person could take with them on the, on that particular day, which is kudos to them for doing that.
Yeah, we started to put can openers and stuff in the pantry and suggested to people, if, you know, if you're looking for donations, hit the dollar store and buy some plastic utensils and some napkins, and stuff you don't think about, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, so we always do try and do the pop tops, but it's not always possible when you're accepting donations, so, yeah, like, I, I love the work you do. I, I, unfortunately, when I'm looking for donations, quite often I'm faced with, sorry, we donate to the Picto County Food Bank, so, but that's okay.
We're not in competition.
No, it's not a competition, no.
One of the things I talked about partnering, and I'd just like to share with you, and maybe perhaps put something in your little, kind of thing to think about. One of the things we, from time to time, we'll find an abundance of items that we have. And so, we'll reach out to school program, we'll reach out to...
Excellent, we were gonna chat after.
So, please, like, contact me, right now, we do have, like, baby formula. We have, we were given a large amount of baby formula, it's good until, I think, February.
Okay.
We put a post on our website saying, if anybody needs formula, you don't need to be a client, come on in, like, we'll give you a case of it.
Yeah, we would love to, to partner up, because we have four locations, Stellerton, Picto, and two here in Westville, so, yeah.
Because I offered the same thing to community colleagues, they have a pantry as well.
I like this, I like where that's going. I think this is the answer, you mean, it needs that collaboration, because we're all trying to, you know, through, through Danielle's work and your work, all trying to achieve the same goal, right?
Exactly.
And unfortunately, it's, it's, it's only growing, as you've indicated in your report. You know, it'd be great to, be great to get to the point where food banks could close, right?
We would be, exactly.
But, you know, that, the reality doesn't say that that's gonna happen anytime soon, unfortunately, unfortunately. And, you know, I, you know, we're only, we're only as good as a society as, 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 you know, as, as, as the weakest member, you know, how we treat our weakest and most vulnerable people, our most, not the weakest necessarily, but our most vulnerable. I think the, you know, the, the mark of a community, and I, I think Westville, you know, we, we want to, we want to get there through, through programs like this, that, that we look after the most vulnerable in our community, and because that's, that's the true mark of, of, you know, how you are as a society, in my opinion, at least anyway. And so, we need to get there. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to comment on our Food For Focus through the United Church.
Right.
Seventeen families they're sponsoring now, and they are delivered food for the weekend. One of the members of the congregation is a substitute teacher, and some kids were asking for something extra, so they had something on the weekend. So, it's all packaged up, and this individual does a lot of the shopping. And they've got gardens over by the United Church, and the residents, the residents, people over in the, in the jail in Parkville are, are pre-staffed, are growing gardens and donating to Food For Focus.
Nice. That's awesome.
Yeah, this is another comparable, another, you know, program that, that needs to be collaborated with, with, with these existing programs.
And with Schools Plus as well? Do you work at all with Schools Plus, like through the elementary schools, like for Walter Duggan or Northumberland?
Not, not on a regular basis, and even as I'm mentioning the items, it's not always that we have an abundance of different items, but when we do, like, we've had perishable items. And I know Leah, who is our operation manager, Leah Leclerc, she contacted one of the... And I know Leah, who is our operation manager, Leah Leclerc, she contacted one of the schools, I'm afraid. I don't know which one it was. But they had a luncheon program and so we provided them with some hamburger. So it was like a wonderful opportunity. So having the ability to get out there, meet with folks and say, we're here, let's kind of develop a little bit of a relationship. So I can make the phone and say, oh, by the way, I have this, could you use it? And so that's certainly something that we're open to. And again, not sure how regularly it'll happen, but if it happens once.
Yeah, but even if it happens once, it's better than never happening if there is a need that each other can work together and help. As long as the people are getting the food.
Exactly. Not just about our clients, it's about providing food for those in need.
That's right, especially when we
A church group or we can do it through, you know, one of the town councils.
I'm an elementary school teacher, so on a daily basis, you see the need for that.
Oh, exactly.
And people are stepping up in so many different ways. So working together with those people and with the food bank just makes sense.
Excellent, yeah, no, exactly. So again, please feel free to share my information and reach out.
Yeah, we'll get that out to council for sure because I think it's valuable information for everybody to have. We have two councillors that, you weren't here when I mentioned that, but were unfortunately not able to be with us tonight. So I know that they appreciate the information as well. You know, as far as the fundraising for the food bank, you're probably very aware. And I want to commend and congratulate the fire department here in Westville, who every year in December do the food drive. And I know, you know, that's helpful in some measure to the food bank. And we're happy to do that. And we also have had occasions at various events, as you've mentioned, to specify, you know, could you bring something for the food bank as an entry maybe? So we'll continue to do those things here in Westville for sure. I can assure you that. I don't speak for the fire department, but I know the fire department will continue, I'm sure, to do that drive. And it's well-received in Westville. You know, prior to the pandemic, it was a door-to-door campaign, went literally every door in this town. Now, because of the pandemic, it learned that you can get people to bring it to a central place. And it's still, as you probably know, still reaping great rewards each year. So I commend the fire department. It's a good time to remind me of that and commend the fire department for continuing to do that, to fill that need. So thank you very much for the presentation. We'll certainly do what we can in Westville. I think we can commit to that, to continue to support the food bank until we don't need it anymore.
Exactly, that'd be nice, yeah. Thank you very much. Appreciate your attendance and we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, folks, if you have the agenda, and I know we circulated an agenda online and had it out previously, there's an item on there from the Department of Justice, a presentation on police costing models. Just a little quick background on that. CAO Weirs and myself had the privilege of meeting with the Minister of Justice from the Department of Justice back in July, I think it was on July 25th, if I remember correctly. That was following the release of the police, provincial police review that was undertaken in the province during the last year. And we had a lot of questions, as do a lot of people in the municipal world, at least around the province, with regard to that review and what it's saying or not saying with regard to the future of policing in our communities. And we're primarily obviously concerned with Westville, what it says about our policing service in Westville and where we should be heading or will be heading in the future. So as a result of that, when Mr. Weirs and myself met with the minister, we had several questions, many questions, with regard to, in particular, one of the areas was the proposal that's being presented with regard to RCMP being a provincial police force in Nova Scotia and basically at some point in time, you know, perhaps taking over policing in our municipal units, you know, in the town of Westville, for example. We had questions around what would it look like? What would the costing be? What would be the costing model? Now, there's reference in the review as well from the province with regard to a new costing formula coming with regard to RCMP usage of the RCMP. There are several, just so you're aware, many communities, towns and counties are policed currently by the RCMP. They don't, like, for example, closest one that I can think of is Picto. The town of Picto does not have a municipal town police service like we do here in Westville. They have, they are policed by the RCMP. And so they have a funding model that they pay to the RCMP with regard to the contingent that they have there. But as I said, the report says there's going to be a new funding model. So we asked the questions, what would it look like? At the time that we met with the minister and representatives from the Department of Justice here, they did not have answers to those questions. So the minister obviously went back and referenced that to her department, members of her department. So shortly afterwards, and I think last month probably, we had a contact from liaison person, the RCMP liaison officer, whatever the proper designation, I'll probably get it wrong, but who works with the Department of Justice, in the Department of Justice, reaching out to us to say, we can come and present to your council with regard to those models and give you some information that you were seeking when you met with the minister that was not available. So we said, yes, we'll sign up for that. We'd like to have that happen. That's why it's on the agenda tonight because the suggested time that we gave to them was tonight. Committee of the Whole Meeting, September 22nd, you can come and present to council. And they were on the agenda, and as you can see, so recent, we couldn't even get it off the agenda. So they were on the agenda up until, I think, 3:30 this afternoon or thereabouts, when we received it. There was a bit of a communication back and forth. The germane part of it was that they indicated the information that they were willing to give to council would be something that would be delivered in camera. Those of you that don't know what in-camera is, in-camera is a closed meeting. And in an in-camera meeting, if it's council or whoever's in that in-camera meeting, it's information that cannot be divulged beyond that meeting. It's, you're sworn under the rules of in-camera that it's confidential. And so you cannot divulge that. We explained today through the CAO, in conversation back and forth with the department, that this was a committee of the whole meeting. And like I did in the beginning, explain what committee of the whole meeting is. It's a public meeting where we receive reports from groups or individuals and it's open. And we do not have in-camera sessions at our committee of the whole meeting. So having said that, the decision was made by the representatives who were going to be coming tonight to say, then we probably will not come and present to you because we want to do it in an in-camera setting. So, you know, I think I've explained it reasonably correct.
As you can get, I think, yeah.
Okay. And so I apologize for that. It was our intention and I know there are other, there are individuals beside council and the police commission who are interested in knowing some of these things. And the other thing I wanted to say is, our desire to have that information with regard to RCMP policing is no way indicating to, I don't want to, I want to make this clear to our residents, no way indicating that at this point in time, the council, the commission, the council, town of Westville, are considering going to RCMP policing. We are not. We're not even talking about it. But for due process and due diligence on our part, we thought if it's being offered, that they'll come from the department and give us that information. At some point in time, we might need that information to make decisions around policing in Westville. And we should avail ourselves to do that. And that's exactly what we propose to do tonight. So I just want to make that very clear, particularly to residents of Westville and to our current members of our police department in Westville, that because they were planning to come and we were going to get that information, no way indicates anything regarding looking at going to RCMP policing in the town of Westville at this point in time. Mr. Weirs, anything that you can add to that?
No, I think you've done an admirable job.
Okay, so that's why it's not on the agenda tonight. Or that's why it's on the agenda, but we don't have the presentation. So enough about that. At some point in time, we hopefully will get that information and it'll be important to council moving forward and to police commission and our members currently. So I did put on, I did put on the agenda under new business. It's not new business, but I put it on there anyway, about the school project, just to bring people up to date on what's going on there. It was referenced at our planning advisory committee meeting last Wednesday evening as well, but just very quickly. The project is going to be going ahead. I can assure people of that. The Nova Scotia Cooperative Council is committed to following through with their desire to bring that housing project to Westville using the former school building, the former Highland Consolidated School building. Yes, they run into a little bit of a hiccup, which is not surprising in a project, I think that Mr. Weirs was referring earlier, not in a project of that magnitude, that there's always going to be surprises that you weren't anticipating that perhaps create a delay. And that's what's happened with this project. It's around the structural integrity of the building. In order for the cooperative council to proceed with the work that they want to do in that building, they have to be assured by an engineer signing off that it's structurally sound and capable of doing what they want to do. The importance of that is more than just being able to do it, but it relates to the funding that they need to get to do the project. And CMHC, for example, is not going to provide the funding until they have that assurance from a qualified engineering firm that the building is structurally sound for them to proceed with the work they want to do. That's the process we're at right now, is that they're going through that due diligence of assessing the building and getting it signed off by a qualified engineer to say they can proceed. That's basically where it's at. But it's, you know, I said many times, this project's going ahead and I still believe that. And it's taking longer than we anticipated. But we have everything ready to go, thanks to our planning department and thanks to our planning advisory committee and council, all the necessary steps with regard to zoning and parsing out the land and knowing what we have there and what we can do with that 21 acres. It's made it easy, it'll be an easy step to move to the next step, once they get that assurance that they can do it. I will say very quickly that the issue is around the joists, the steel joists that were used in the building, the school back in the day when it was built. They're called a Robb Joyce, R-O-B-B. Robb Joyce was, Robb was the engineering company that constructed the joists that were used, not just in the school, the Highland Consolidated School, but in many buildings across the province back in the 80s. And what happened was that at some point in time, it became aware, some people became aware that there were some defects in some of those joists that were produced by Robb Engineering. So the province created a list of buildings that had those joists in them. They did inspections, they sent out inspectors, engineers and so on to do the inspections. And those that needed to be remediated were repaired and remediated. I think those buildings still stand, I'm guessing. And some were found to be okay, I'm sure. I don't know that for sure, but I'm guessing, only speculating on that part of it. But unfortunately, for some unbeknownst reason, this school in Westville was not included on that inspection list, although it had the Robb Joyce. And so it was missed. So the inspection was never done back in the 80s or whenever it was done, from then to 2000, I guess. So that put us in the position of, we thought when this first came out, that they identified that being Robb Joyce, we'd just go to the school board, they'd have the record of the inspection. Obviously, the school remained open, so obviously, our assumption was they'd be fine. But then we come to find out that I just said, the inspection was never done. So that's where we are. That's why we have to do the inspection now. At least the cooperative council has to do the inspection now because it's their building now, basically. But we're going to assist them. We have a partnership with them and it's a good partnership. They're the right people to be involved in this project and we still believe that. And we still support them in what they're doing. So that's basically where it's at, you know. I don't think I can say much more than that. And I hope, we're hoping that, you know, we're in a matter of weeks to, you know, a couple of months away from getting the answer on that. We don't really know that. We need to find the, they need to find the correct firm and the cost if we're doing it. You know, that's the other part of it. So we certainly are prepared to come to the table to assist with that if we have to. We have some means to do that. We've told them that. And the province, I believe, is, you know, hopefully going to come aboard as well and assist with that. Because it's a project that's going to create, you know, 64-plus housing units here in the town of Westville. And that go to your point earlier that was raised, a portion of them will be affordable, so-called affordable housing units. So it's a very important project, vital to fulfilling the needs of town of Westville, but well beyond the town of Westville and fulfilling the requirements that the province is pushing for more housing, as well as the federal government for that matter. So, you know, we remain optimistic.
Yeah.
We remain optimistic.
We get questions, like, we get, you know, people are asking us all the time. Everybody's super excited about the project. So, you know, we can assure you that council wants it to go ahead. And the only answer we can give is, when we know, we know. But, yeah, we're not holding it up at all.
Okay. So our next meeting of council, by the way, is one week from tonight, 6 o'clock here in the chambers. We'll be dealing with a lot of important matters again, as happens every month. This project that was on the public hearing will be addressed as far as moving forward or not. And one thing that we don't do at our committee of the whole meeting generally, because it's not on the agenda, is, you know, at our council meetings, we have what we call public engagement at the end of it. So we allow anyone that has comments, questions, concerns, or accolades, we accept those now too, to come forward and state that. What I'm going to do tonight is simply say, going to make an executive decision and say, because we have a number of people that came out to this meeting, and thank you for coming, by the way. We much appreciate you coming, showing an interest in what's going on in this town. To do that, to engage with us if they so desire, to ask questions, to make a comment on anything that's of importance, town-related.
I'll speak up to the lady next door to me because she wants
Could you, I know that
That's all right.
If you could come up, just so we can have it recorded and
Sure, I can hear my people.
All right. So what we do is we ask for your name and your address and then you state your questions and
I'm Katie Gordon. I live on 1764 Jerry's Lane. Oh, the lady that lives next door to me, she spent over $300 already on her car for Katy Avenue because they patched the road, which they did a good job of patching. But there's two sections that is not patched and very deep potholes, which caused her to have to buy new tires for the car. So I'm speaking for her because she lives in Jerry's Lane as well. So we were just wondering why those two spots were not patched. One is by where the new apartments are going in by Katy Avenue and the other part is up by 9 O'Hare's House.
Yeah, I'm guessing, I'll defer this question to CAO Weirs. But I'm guessing the one by the development would have to do with that.
With the development.
Putting services in, I'm, no? Okay.
No, they dug across to put sewer and water
See, that's why I didn't want to answer because I don't know.
They dug already across to put sewer and water in.
Right.
And they filled it, they did it and they filled it all in.
All right, okay.
So now it's still not paved, it's just packed around it.
Yeah, just can I ask, so what you're talking about, are they like potholes? Is that what you're talking about?
They're holes.
Holes, okay.
Yeah.
I use that, I use that street quite often myself and I, maybe I avoided them somehow and I don't know.
If you could go around the one by 9 O'Hare's there, you go, not here, I'm saying wrongly, Neil. You could go by around hers on one side, but you can't go down by the other part.
Okay, okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll look into it. Yeah, absolutely. You know, this is how, this is how things happen. I mean, you know, we don't propose, I said this many times, I'll say it again tonight. You know, there's five of us on council that sit around this table. We have a planning advisory committee that consists of two other citizens appointees that are on that. And, you know, a staff, small staff here. We don't propose to know everything that's going on in town or what needs to go on in town. I make that declaration quite often. So we need public input. We welcome public input. We seriously do. And it doesn't have to all be praise and accolades like I jokingly referred to earlier. We welcome comments and, you know, then we, you know, we have a staff that does the operational part of running this town. Council is a policy body. We don't physically go out and Council is a policy body, we don't physically go out and make decisions on what we do from day to day, nor do we want to. But this guy here is in charge of, of all the staff in town, and he, he will take it under advisement and, and find an answer, I know that for sure. This is how things happen in this town, and if it's something that we're neglecting, that we need to do, we should do, we'll, we'll do it, simple as that. So I welcome, welcome those questions, I welcome those concerns, I've never said no to someone when they, we don't have the answers, but we'll listen and we'll, we'll do what we can to, to rectify, if we can, the situation. Anything else, anyone has? Wonderful. So thank you again for coming, I encourage you to come more frequently if you can, you know, like I said, the next meeting is the, the council meeting, which is open to the public. Planning Advisory Committee, I keep saying this, but if you want to see what's going on development-wise, what's, the activity-wise in town, it's on the third Wednesday of each,